And their parents.
We just don't want that.
Well, yeah, definitely. I totally agree, but everything just start now.
So I have one question for you. How does everyone know when the fight starts? Because people start on the.
Oh, they both have social media.
Is there like a social media site?
Chat, I mean, I don't know, but um, I was there on Saturday night when the one by the Ferris wheel happened. And I, I got my butt out of there. I was like, I work for Syracuse, I'm out of here. I'm not trying to like, so.
Ferris wheel.
I mean, and like, and like, is that fight or any from Syracuse?
Well, I know, that's, that's the problem is though, all the families did the same thing you did, and so all we're left with was a whole bunch of thugs.
See, if we could just have some dancing.
Yeah, and the vendors are now.
West side.
Huddling in their dance fight. Their.
Counsel, I'm gonna call you together. Doug, are you with us?
Doug, we know you're there. I can see there's two people on conference.
It's all good.
And we assume he can hear us.
He's fanning ignorance.
Let's go ahead and begin. Let's, just for the economy of time, I'm gonna call the discussion at eight fifteen, because it may be the last time I can call discussion. But I've never been in a meeting, wasn't, the agenda wasn't, wasn't also timed, and it happens in government all the time. Committee meetings in, back in, they get what, five minutes, they discuss, and I think for the, from my, from my perspective, it helps us manage a meeting. It moves us forward, uh, and keeps us moving forward, so we don't get distracted around chasing squirrels. So I've, I've asked Noah to take a piece of the planning, of the general plan for us, and we'll discuss just that piece this evening. We'll do so again in July, and we'll do so again in, in August. So have at it. Noah, listen.
Thank you. Okay, so, the goal is to continue gathering your valuable input. The things that you told me last time, I listened to. I think it was some good things. Uh, let me.
I love the chart, by the way.
Good. Let me just quickly go over the, the changes. Um, I added a chart, um, and I just added a sentence that basically talks about the, the, uh, the birth rate for the family size. I got rid of the jug handle, just made it more general.
I saw that still in the current package. Cause I was gonna ask.
Oh, and then.
It's not that huge.
Okay, well, if you find it less.
There is another image that's talking about agriculture that I, that, is it this one?
No.
Okay, that one does have it. I also visited the architecture, but in a sense saying that it's.
Page thirteen.
Not required.
Page thirteen?
There's page thirteen.
It's all text.
Housing.
Page thirteen. Uh, page thirteen, probably page thirteen's not.
It's all text.
That's the same one he just showed us on.
Are you looking at a different packet?
City Parks Agriculture and Wetlands.
Yes, that same one.
That's the one he just showed you.
Yeah, that one's the one that we need to change.
I don't know what page, we're on seventeen.
Seventeen on the.
Okay, yeah, noted. I can easily change that background image.
Okay.
Easy. That's a good catch, thank you. So, in addition to that, um, the, the major changes involved the table. We talked, remember, we've talked a lot about.
Yeah.
The, the A, R one, R two, R three, and should they be in low, medium, and high? And I've printed off some visual aids to help. We, it's, it's a challenge to try to communicate what Planning Commission talked about for a long time, multiple months. But this is something that was presented in, in the visioning meetings and also the Planning Commission, so you see the categories. We were painting with a broad, broad brush, and each category, we were visualizing more than we were thinking in table form. And the pictures is really what, what we were trying to imagine, um, in each one of those categories. And so, in general, low density, we were imagining single-family homes. In general, medium density, we're imagining townhomes. So if you look, the yellow, low density, orange, medium density, brown, high density, generally thinking apartments. Commercial, um, you can see kind of what we're thinking about, but also maybe some office and, um, mixed use kind of thing. And then industrial, you can see visually what, what we were imagining with this map. And, and then, the table comes along almost as a necessity for clarification for properties of really what we were, what, you know, flexibility. Acknowledging that we, that we can predict the future to a certain extent and make some analysis, but we don't know exactly. So we didn't wanna necessarily paint this into a corner. So, um, that's, that's why you have the table and the zones, but from what the input I heard last time, um, for the table, I included all of the Rs in the low, and then medium, I dropped off the R one, but kept the R two and R three high. Kept just the R three. Everything else remained the same. Also, um, by way, and just understand that I, I put this on so we can just see it, try it out for size. Does not mean that this is final, of course. Based off of the input that we received in the public hearing, this brown would be the high density at the property owner's request. Obviously, we are the ones that are, that's planning for the better good of the community, and wanna make sure we make those decisions with holistic view. But, uh, looking at that, and looking at the table for high density, notice there's still a lot of flexibility. There could still be a general commercial, professional office, or mixed use, use within that high-density residential. But, that summarizes all the changes. Um, I, I think we made it about halfway through. The mayor's asked us to focus on one section at a time. I think a lot of the comments are, are around the, the map, you know, if we can focus on that, if, but, um, I'm, I'm all ears. So I wanna, I think that the document just keeps getting better, and I wanna listen to what you have to say.
Okay, can we start right where you left off? Cause I think you bring up some interesting points. I'm a little concerned that what we're calling a high-density residential is really two different zones mixed in same generalization. Because, I kind of feel like, while mixed use may make sense, other than mixed use, I don't see neighborhood services, or general commercial, or, uh, professional office really belonging in the same zone as an R three or an RPC. I, I mean, one is, was clearly residential, and one is clearly a different field.
Are people have to take off R three and RPC up there?
Uh, which one?
So, my question is, well, but if we do that, is it no longer high density, is it more?
Medium?
Well, no, is it more called something like general commercial or, or commer-? Because I kind of feel like that's one of the areas that if we're gonna be really general, I don't wanna be vague on whether this should be a housing development, or whether it should be a professional.
But on this sheet, and I actually like this better, the high-density residential is just PRD, mixed use, general.
Right, it takes off R three.
I actually.
This is what we started with, and then, kind of, this is where it morphed through the input that we got from Planning Commission, so.
I like this one better.
So we could do that, um, if that's what you guys want. One thing we would lose is the flexibility to say, well, we, we have this clause in our ordinance that says that the zoning has to match the general plan exactly. So, by having the specific zones listed out, uh, it provides some flexibility. So we could amend the ordinance to kind of unhitch that, so that the general plan is more of a guiding document, or we can.
I don't wanna do that.
Or we can keep it the way it is, and that's fine, and provide, um, options in the contemplated zones, so that if it does come up. But just understand, if we remove the general commercial from the high-density in those areas that we designated as high-density, we wouldn't have that option.
Because you want your neighborhood services right next to your bigger apartments, if you end up with bigger apartments.
Right.
You want to be able to.
I like high-density residential having the commercial aspect to it.
Right there, yeah.
Because I would actually prefer a professional office to a high-density.
So, what if we take out R three, RPC, and PRD? Me, leaving the only option remaining being mixed use, so that it could be multi-use dwellings, but not single-lot dwellings. Cause that's kind of where I think there should be a division. If, are we talking about single property ownership, or?
A medium, PRD is townhomes.
But I think.
And that's okay.
That we have decided for our cities what PRD.
But I'm okay, I'm okay with a PRD slash RPC type townhome development. It would be largely townhomes and not single lot.
Well, RPC wouldn't fit unless we changed RPC, because RPC has to have single family units.
I think PRD still fits in high-density residential, it's just, it would be townhomes.
We've only got RPC on these pictures in the low density. Is that, are you looking somewhere else?
No, it's. It's, it's just because it's planned community though, and so that's what, it could totally be a higher density planned community.
I would like to take out R three and RPC.
We have to change RPC. I'm not saying that you're not wrong in that we could have an RPC, it's like that, but our current ordinance doesn't allow RPC to be that.
And from a planning perspective and staff, I, I think that's a great idea. The reason why it's in there is because Planning Commission wanted it to be in there, because they felt that RPC was high-density.
I understand, I disagree, I think it's medium.
A four, a four-headed pervert is not necessarily high-density.
Well, but PRD on this road would be twelve units.
Right.
And, and in the zones we're showing, except for over here, here's kind of a interesting, but along Antelope, it would be twelve units, and it would be PRD, which to this community is high-density.
It's really not.
It's really medium density.
It really is, but to this community.
They consider it high.
And so, but if, if we have it in both, I mean, it's not harmful.
Okay, so what if we just take out R three and RPC?
Okay.
Because the RPC does require a diversity.
Okay, I agree.
That's the key differentiator, and in these small little high-density lots, there's no room for that.
Let me, let me do a straw man then. Doug, are you on with us? Maybe he drowned.
R three, let's take it out.
Those of you, we have a quorum sitting at the table. We have a quorum sitting at the table. Give, give, give them some direction on this thing. Tell them what you're saying.
From what I'm hearing, I'm, I'm hearing take R three and RPC off, high-density residential.
Yes, I agree with that.
But I do like PRD, mixed use, general commercial, and what are neighborhood services, I think should be in there as well.
I'm okay with that.
We've got all the, yeah, neighborhood services, oh, it is on there on that one, but we got three different things here.
Well, yeah, these, these are not following.
These are not consistent with this.
And this is not consistent with either of the other two.
Okay, let's just break this way. This is what the Planning Commission said.
Okay.
This is what we suggested.
Just look at the table.
Yeah, let's just look up there.
Just look at the table, yeah.
Okay, so.
Put the blinders on.
So what, we've, at least three of us said, I can't.
I think all four of you are in agreement.
All right, so, okay, we're good.
So Noah has his marching orders.
Awesome. Okay, Doug, if yours are still on, you can call back in, if you can't hear us.
I think from a planning perspective, that makes a lot of sense.
Good job.
It keeps it more high-density.
And it keeps it clean.
So, I know we all have questions about the map, can we address some of those?
Yeah, I think that's a good.
Well, I.
So are we good on this table, Doug?
I don't know, but let's just, let's finish the table before we go to the map.
Well, I'm seeing what's applied to it, but go ahead.
Okay.
Do you have another challenge?
No, I just wanted to make sure I read everything. Um, do we think R two is still considered medium?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that question.
Majority of Syracuse is R two.
What about, what do we consider neighborhood services? Could you clarify that for me?
Like dentist.
Do you consider R two?
Is that just services like?
Or should we check?
What is a neighborhood service?
Isn't that single?
I'm getting two questions.
Sorry.
Uh, I can answer them both.
Yes.
I think Jordan asked first.
Yes.
What is neighborhood services? Neighborhood services is kind of a zone that's geared around, like, those homes, like A insurance that are converted to.
A home converted to.
To a commercial kind of use, and, but it's not necessarily limited to that, but it's like kind of smaller scale on a major arterial.
Finishing mall or park, yeah.
Like stop by.
Just for the neighborhood, not a regional law. Okay, and then, and then Corinne asked, what would you consider medium density?
See, on the R two, you do have a point there.
I'm like, it's a little bit low density.
Dialing back, cause it is a single lot situation.
It is.
I feel like it's more yellow.
I feel like it's more yellow, but.
So you can see what, how the original breakdown was, kind of, what I was.
Your argument is that if we don't have R two in a medium density, can you still build one there? I think that would be just a request for zone changing.
Yeah.
Don't think we'd ever get one to go with a lower density, but just in case, I'm open to it.
Yeah, that's a great point.
A has to be.
Right.
That's a very good point, that I, I think is worth repeating, just to make sure we all understand. Just because something is in, contemplated as a potential zone, when somebody applies for it, does not mean that you have to say yes.
So, in that case, take off R three then, too.
Nah, I believe our, I think our three is.
No, I think R three is medium.
Really?
Yeah.
What, tell me, what, what, but it's still single townhomes, they're not conjoined.
Yeah, R three lots are very small.
RPC is gonna add individual, cause there's, you have to have a component of that.
I think RPC and R three are similar type lot sizes.
Okay, all right, I can go with that.
But we don't, we don't zone R four anymore, so we can, I noticed R four is here or there.
But don't we have to have an R four legally, because there's some exists?
That's what the text is there for, but you, what you're saying here is you're not planning for any more.
We're not planning for any more.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm good with that.
So, R two's off.
Yeah, I do.
I'm good with that.
Okay, have we clouded the direction, or are we good?
Okay, so, medium, I'm taking off R two.
Yes, medium off.
Hi, I'm taking off R three, RPC.
Yes.
Got it. Just because that makes, that makes neighborhoods more unified.
And R two is low.
Yeah, that makes sense. I'm good with that.
Okay. Um, could, would RPC fall under low density as well?
No.
No, do you think so?
No, because.
Like, the ski lakes could be planned community, you know what I mean? It really is. And those are huge, million dollar homes.
I, I mean, I see that point. But usually, RPC is in a mixed densities, and you're gaining some density, like, in person.
Counsel, I'm gonna suspend discussion, we're just gonna, so that we can get Brody and.
Right, so it's kind of weird.
Doug, can you ask?
We had like one option.
We have two.
Can I go to that?
Two that I can see that probably needed to happen.
Again, cluster, I still.
Yeah, that's my question, does cluster belong in any of?
Well, we're supposed to suspend, unless you want to have a challenge.
Everybody stop listening to you. Brody, you there?
Can you hear me now?
So we just called on a couple of cell phones, cell phone, middle of the day.
I, can we go on?
Yeah, go ahead.
I could also go with cluster in medium, because, uh, even though it overall doesn't meet that, we are having an increased density. So I could see cluster in both low and medium.
I agree.
Hello?
Can you hear me now?
I, I just think potential for it, doesn't mean it will happen.
Well, except for that the overall percentage of land per house, it still doesn't, doesn't.
But those people don't actually own that land.
Think that is part of things, is part of their community.
Brody, maybe. Even a cluster is strangely reminiscent of RPC. Except they don't need a, you don't need a feature, really, yes.
Cluster. But it's so really.
What it is to, so trails, so with this cluster, it's a turn up here, that is, it's taken densify one area.
And over the other.
And change for preserving the area.
So, so, residential planned community is, is different.
Is different layers.
But I do really think the argument is to, this is separated from R one cluster, you know, I mean, that definition's been removed.
I get that argument.
But it's not gonna happen very much, no.
No, I don't think so either, but I would be, I would welcome a medium density, cause I could see it fitting in medium density.
Let's stop just a minute today. Would you bring Doug up to date on what our discussion, where we're at?
What we're discussing right now, Doug, is whether cluster is applicable to both medium and low density. Um, some of us feel like you could do a cluster in medium density as well, and it would still be appropriate.
Just because the, the grouping of the houses has more of a, uh, medium density feel than it does.
Corinne shaking her head, no, just so you know, we're not a hundred percent.
I'm like on this, yeah, cause your overall density is still low.
So, cluster is two point three units per acre, but they're squished together.
Squished together.
Seven thousand square foot. So a seven thousand square foot lot, four, forty-three thousand square feet is an acre, so.
So, we're talking squished together more like six units per acre, even though it's really only two overall, because of that. See, and because of that six, I'm realistic, I kind of think it, it's, and I'm not saying excluding.
It could fit in both.
I'm just saying it could be in either.
People will consider it medium. Like, if I'm looking at a subdivision and I'm considering where would I want to build, or buy an acre or something, if I see six homes in an acre, that's medium density to me.
But let's look at what it's felt for this day. If they're gonna live at a medium density, they, oh, with the cluster here, why?
I suspect it will, but I.
That's what I mean.
But I wanna be open to it, but I wanna be open to it, that's what I'm saying. He says, well, because of, because, because why would you do cluster? Part of the land isn't really developable as housing, but it's maybe good for preservation of this place. So he says, well, I wanna do this because I wanna preserve this space.
Fine, that's fine.
I would.
I had that same argument last week with, hey, if you wanna make your lot, we wanna do so for it.
Adding it to both doesn't necessarily hurt anything.
So I was.
Just adds more flexibility. If you look strictly at the pictures, you know, we're imagining low density as single-family detached, medium as attached, high as kind of stacked.
If you want more general, general map, I say we put it in both.
Okay.
Cause I did have a request. Is that, can we close the blinds over there? There's just like, the sun reflecting out that metal roof over there, it's blanking.
So, you're just, you're just giant.
Her halo, it's my halo.
I'm hearing add cluster to medium.
Yeah.
Is that what everybody's saying?
That was an agreement. Now are we okay with the?
I don't care either. It doesn't matter.
I'm hearing, adding cluster to medium is an agreement.
Yeah.
But, does Doug want to have any input here? On the cluster to, adding to medium, what do you think, Doug?
Okay, I didn't hear the whole conversation, some of your part here, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
I haven't told I speak very quietly.
If I'm just looking at the table, and we say add cluster, it kind of makes sense. If I look at the map, uh, it could make sense in certain areas, for example, the southern portion of the city. If I look at the origin there, so, uh, was there some discussion about, uh, if somebody guaranteed that in that area?
No.
Some of these small origin areas, I would want that.
Perfect, then, add it to medium.
Yeah, and Doug, I can answer your question, and I think you missed that part, is, if something is on the general plan, and somebody comes in for a rezone, you're not forced to automatically approve it, just because it's on the general plan, just to be clear. It's just, this is a guiding document, so it's saying, yeah, we think that in this area, all of these uses could work, we'd be okay with, with some of these. But ultimately, it's a case-by-case basis, an application, you make the decision.
Okay, thank you. I know that's back in my mind, but I always wanted to hear you say it. So I'm okay with that.
So.
Yeah, do you want Paul to say you won't get in legal trouble to a zoning application?
That is correct. Okay, everybody feeling comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay. Table checked.
Yay.
So now can we take a look at the map, because that's the next thing on the pack. I.
Start. Door.
I have a, I don't know why we're taking this unannexed portion of land below, um, or, uh, next to three thousand, Cook property, and making it orange. Why isn't it yellow like it's always been?
I can answer that.
Go for it.
Go ahead.
It was yellow, then the Planning Commission took RPC out of low density. And we know that we have an RPC development in that area, and it would essentially.
But that's not a hundred acres, so it would never qualify for RPC.
It is a hundred acres, actually, and I think if we're talking about the same, same spot.
This little finger right here?
Oh, no, we are not talking about the same.
Sorry, yeah, I'm sitting right here, why is this one orange and not yellow? It's been yellow forever.
Sorry, we were talking about two different part, I thought we were talking about, I'm glad that we clarified. That is orange because of the maps that we received in the visioning exercises. They envisioned that open ground being with this proximity to the intersection of the West Davis corridor as being, being, being prime for.
So I get this.
Maybe, maybe it needs to taper off on the bottom.
That's, that's just what I'm saying, I get this, but, and let, and keep in mind, that if this actually becomes commercial, I could see maybe making an adjustment, but I don't want to start there.
Well, that's, they were looking at twenty fifty, you know, so you have to keep that in mind.
Over the next twenty thirty years, yeah.
My point is, it's not even annexed yet.
Yeah, but it's going to be farmed as long as he's alive, so.
No, he doesn't even farm it.
Well, what do we know?
His house on it.
He, he wants it to be farmed as long as he's alive.
That's right.
And so therefore, if nothing's gonna happen to it for a while.
So why, why offend it?
Cause we're planning, and he's not offended, he's, mayor's made good notion to let him know he can do what he wants for as long as he wants.
If you wanna graduate the scale, so that as we get closer over to twenty-seven hundred, it moves yellow, I don't mind with that.
I, well, so because it's between two yellow areas, that, there is master planning for roads to go through and connect these roads. I mean, the stubs are already there to connect, so in my mind, we ought to leave it yellow until there's a reason to do different.
Except for that we are planning on commercial, the top end, so I would rather.
Right next to red, I, I'd like a transition.
Yeah, it should. You don't wanna have low density next to commercial.
Low density.
I mean, if he's gonna be offended by commercial there, you know, I mean, he's gonna be, he's gonna buy all of it, so we need to.
I don't even want it to be medium density, because I think that it's consistent with everything around it.
I, I'm going for the graduated as well.
But you graduate back, that's the, that's the point, is.
To the, to the south.
So maybe we, yeah, I'm all ears, do we make a compromise? Or, or if everybody thinks it should be yellow, I'll change it to yellow?
I want it to be yellow, I feel like, I feel like it's fair to represent everybody in this section of the city to say that they would like to see good reason before it goes in to be yellow.
I, I would make it orange to the jog, and then the jog go yellow the rest of the way.
I'm good with that.
Can I hear you two?
I, I, I agree with the, the jog, and then yellow the rest.
Doug, are you, are you following this?
Is the Cook property?
We're talking about Lawrence Cook's property, uh, south, south.
When I look at the map, uh, it makes sense to, north to all be yellow. When I look at east and west, but when I look north to that commercial, I think I like the idea of graduated.
Okay, that's, that's that new church. Just put low density around the church, why put higher density around that?
To be clear, it's not low density.
I'm hearing the majority of you are saying, make it yellow, make it yellow, stop at the jog.
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it. What else?
That helps my, but it doesn't help people with ranches west and, um.
They won't be happy with the, with the possibility of medium density?
Yeah.
Which is, what are their, what are their lot sizes now?
Half acre.
Half acre. You know.
I can see we're graduating off some of that area next to, but you can see it's being commercial. That's gonna be.
But you can still do. Keep in mind, you can still do cluster, one, two, or three. You can do R three. All I'm saying is let's not say that you can do RPC there.
I, I don't think anything's gonna happen for at least ten years, so just relax. It's gonna be fine. We'll be off the council by then.
Do I really hope so? I want that road to go through, gets the church. And that'll be my church.
That would be nice when that road goes through.
I would like that road to go through.
But I think you want, you've got direction.
Yes.
Okay, let's move on. Any more map?
Yeah, so, I question this still being industrial. The one up at the top.
Talking of the big purple square there?
Yeah.
On one.
That was blue on the screen, but that's.
It looks good. Why is that, why is that?
Doug, or uh, Dave, point at it again, will you?
We'll check it out. We need a laser.
All right, yeah. This one right here, I question why it's industrial, because I can see lots of uses there. It seems to fit more red than it does purple.
But if we had the chance of getting Lifetime and buy some lots there, that'd be industrial. I'd welcome.
But with you, the Costco there, that would be commercial.
Well.
See, I don't wanna cut out anything.
You're setting the commercial aside, just saying.
And, and it's hard to really predict exactly what the market viability of the property is.
And just cause, just cause it's one, doesn't mean it's not part of the other.
Here's my point.
There is an option for general commercial.
Uh, not so. Here's my point. If, if, uh, somebody said, well, I wanna do big boxes there.
Industrial has general commercial in it.
I don't want them to think that we don't want that there.
Exactly.
But if somebody came and said, where's a piece of land that we could build, say, a data center? I don't know. I would be all for changing it, because that would be a good move.
But industrial has all that in it.
Yeah.
Industrial allows for general commercial?
Industrial has business park, industry, mixed use, general commercial, and professional office.
That was in our table that we just found everything.
Yeah, on the screen, George.
It's adoption. It's just saying that all of them are options.
And, and again.
Not as high as industrial, so, yeah.
Okay, so here's where I have the issue then.
Okay.
Okay.
This is a little technical, but in industrial is where we have put the less desirable businesses that we have no, uh, ability to legislate against. We just have to designate some zone somewhere. That's industrial. So, while the industrial that we have in the city is currently built out without those services, such as adult matriarch businesses, I don't wanna add that and have somebody saying, hey, I wanna, you can't deny me, because this is zoned for it.
But then again, if we exclude the possibility of the industrial right along an area that has a lot of industrial companies, that's bad.
Well, that's a long ways away.
Not really. It's like a mile.
Perhaps I could shed some light on to the reasoning behind that section of industrial. And you're right, you, you never wanna plan for that part of town, right?
Yeah.
And, and again, this is a general plan, so you would have a zoning.
Thank you for understanding.
Of course, yeah.
We all do.
Um, you know, so, of course, there'd be a zoning application and you'd have, still have some control, so it's not automatic. But the reasoning in that big chunk is what we learned with Brigham and with Facebook. And that large tracts of land next to major transportation corridor with lots of power, lots of water, close to Salt Lake City Airport is becoming more and more increasingly rare. So I think is what we're imagining here is corporate campus, Facebook, things like that.
I'm okay with that. I, I am. I'm just, I'm cautionary to, I, I'm cautionary to the other.
That's the re-question. Sure. I think that's why I was in bringing that up. And I, I'll also point out, um, the, so the table does, would, would allow still for general commercial, um, and then say, say Costco wants to come in here.
Yeah.
Just to get an idea of, of scale, so this is, this is about fifty acres right here.
That's the size of the Riverdale Costco.
Costco is about this quarter of that seventy acres.
Yeah, that's true. It really is.
So, if you get the sense of scale for how much land this really is over there, so you could, you could still do, you know, like ten Costcos and do some stuff.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I'm just wanna make sure we all understand.
I'm not gonna sign that one. Let's talk about the next one that I think has to change. What's the reasoning for having this general commercial?
That one's a weird one.
Is it because there's gonna be an offer and plus one?
No.
And it, major traffic going through, I, I mean, that is a good question.
I mean, it's a roundabout, so you can't pull out of a roundabout as a business.
You can't pull out of a roundabout.
And, and I've talked to Robert about this, and I, I don't wanna be in conflict to, to what our city's plans are.
To a future plan, because there is another use there.
Yeah. There, that is ideal place for a saltwater detention pond.
Reservoir.
Uh, reservoir, excuse me. The, the reason why it's red is because with the proximity to the interchange and, so any, any commercial activity is driven by access and visibility, so, so this will have increase in both of those. And if you look, um, the concept of a village center.
If you have this one, I have the same question.
Kind of some equally spaced out commercial areas for a small dentist office or a convenience store, so that, you, I mean, looking at the whole city fabric, you have, of course, the town center that's gonna house the majority of your commercial activity. But in efforts to reduce, um, traffic on our roads and driving and to facilitate the little kid that wants to walk from his house over to the store to get whatever, a soda pop or something, it's just nice, it's convenient to have a few of those kinda dispersed throughout the city, um, to capture some of that need.
I can see they're getting off of the interchange there, get gas, get that going, I agree.
But whether or not that's the right corner of that intersection. How, how was the distance between that interchange and that roundabout, roundabout?
Um, each square is one mile, so that's about half mile.
If I were to ask Siri, where's the closest gas station? I would go there, just saying.
I'd be able to handle the exit as well.
How old's that land?
The, the other corner that's available is, is southwest.
I think that would be.
Higher dirt there.
But it's gonna be used to the road construction.
So UDOT's acquired it, but it won't keep it.
Sorry, go.
I was just pointing out that, that out of the, the corners there, um, the northeast and they basically have things developed on, on more than half of it, but you do have another corner south of there that could be transferred.
I, I think you'd, you'd better up things that red closer to the interchange.
That's an option too.
Well, but that land's already.
It is pretty close to, well, okay.
But that land around the interchange is already pretty much designated housing lots that we've approved.
I know.
So it won't happen.
Not really.
All, all of this is already approved for still water, you can see on the screen.
Yeah, that's right in the middle of still water.
Right there, that's all still water.
The, the brown.
The brown that we've reallocated to.
But the orange above it, so, is the orange above?
The planning commission for that brown.
And the orange above it right goes to the new RPC for CWA.
Robert, how critical is that, that secondary retention, that secondary pond there at the roundabout to our system long term?
Our master plan does show we do need another twenty acre foot storage pond.
It's just marked agricultural.
Um, you know, that isn't the only place, but that definitely is an ideal location.
Well, ideal is.
It can be a beautiful pond as you go around the roundabout.
Big savings too, because UDOT might gift it.
Interconnect our other reservoirs.
And we say, you know, why are you taking the dirt?
He's saying some really good things.
It has a water source from, uh, air irrigation, Lake Canal and West Ranch to be able to feed, so three sources can feed to that, plus, plus on overflow. If we overflow our free port and our bluff pond, it can, it could overflow there, so.
So how many is that piece of land? How much?
It's a, it's a good location.
How much, you mean twenty acres?
It's a twenty acre foot, so, that'll be the whole piece, the whole piece of road.
An acre foot, so that's, yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry.
The nice thing is if, if we just start planning for this now, UDOT's gonna be moving all that dirt inside there.
Right.
I bet you they would not be upset at all if we said, you know what, why don't you go an extra ten feet down?
And just keep going.
Because there're gonna be a lot of dirt and they'll say, that way we, we get our pond dug.
That's already.
For free.
For free, and I'll, and we didn't have to haul away the dirt.
They get all the dirt they need.
This, it's.
So I really don't wanna see that one red. I don't see any reason for it. I don't see any motivation to utilize it as red.
I'd like to, we should take it off.
What if we took the lower southern corner of that same area, not said commercial? You know, i- if you just, if flip flop it.
On the other side right there?
Yeah, right there. That corner. Same area, but then you, if.
So gives you the option for somebody to build something on it like a gas station or something, and then it also gives you enough space for the retention?
And on.
Well, traffic wise, it's a hundred times better, because that little narrow point makes it really difficult to get in and out of.
Yeah, I'm okay if we wanna trade that and take that.
Okay, let's do that.
And do we wanna zone that little area right there as agricultural now?
Sure.
I would.
Yeah, because we have to do it anyway if we want.
Yeah. I recommend we do low density.
Well, if, if you, if you plant it as agricultural, it's, even though it's general planned as housing, I mean, I think it, it makes it more beneficial so that you, it's already ready to go when we, we have to make a change, we try and do this.
Yeah. To build a detention pond or retention pond, you wouldn't have to change the zoning. It would be permitted use in all of the zones. But if you guys want it green, that's okay. We, we can do it green.
I don't know what, but well, and by zoning the general commercial, doesn't make it worth more? You know, I don't wanna start jacking up the price of this worthless piece of land, so that UDOT will say, we'll sell it back to you at a much higher price than it's worth.
I like, I like it as agricultural.
That's a really good question and one that I've, I've called the county assessor's office before and asked him, what is, what is the connection between land values and general plan?
Yeah.
And he says, when we do our evaluation, regardless of what is current zoning or regardless of what the general plan, if it has commercial viability, we're gonna value it as a commercial property regardless of what, what.
If they're.
And so I see, where I see it as not at all valuable, commercial, I don't wanna call it that, and have somebody try to pay the value being way up there.
So he'll prob, they'll probably call it commercial anyways.
Well, I'm, I say we zone it as agricultural.
Yeah.
And then to the other corner is yellow. Perfect. Anything else? I'm sorry, I have done this plan initially already, so it's like, it's like shooting yourself twice.
You haven't had that chance.
Shooting yourself twice?
Yes, yeah.
Do I, do I sense, do I sense, flip it to the other side of the road?
I'm okay if you flip it to the other side of the road, but I really want this one to not be red on that corner, because I'm worried that we'll pay a price for that.
Yeah. Okay, so red there, red on the southwest corner and green on the northwest.
Perfect.
Okay, got it.
So let's talk about this southernmost point down by Gentile that's red and what makes sense there.
Okay. Right there?
Yeah.
We do have a storage unit area, right? Don't we? Somewhere right over there.
So that is another roundabout right there.
No. It was a future downtown.
A future.
It's a roundabout that we build later this year.
We're building it. We're building it. We're telling it's there.
Current, current zoning is, is industrial, but it could be storage units, but with the West Davis corridor, everything south of, of Gentile is getting acquired by UDOT for well mitigation, so I, I don't think that's a stored unit area anymore.
Okay. So that, that one part that we approved a while back is not, okay.
I don't think that's happening.
Okay, perfect. So then.
I just don't know if that's really a.
We don't really have any.
It's not here, uh, yeah, there's nothing planned in that area.
The great thing though about it is you have a main thoroughfare of Gentile right there, and you have West Davis corridor. With two of those, it's just like analogues and West Davis. You need to plan something commercial there.
I think Gentile traffic is gonna be the road that takes the biggest hit, because nobody likes to drive on Gentile.
Oh, there's so many times when I hear traffic is bad, I get off and go Gentile all the time.
And then you're back then for the next stop.
No, I think Gentile's gonna be huge once the corridors here.
And then plus also they're going to, they're gonna finish the, the Leyton Parkway, and it's gonna go right down to that area as well and join into that roundabout.
You think it'll be bigger?
Oh, yeah.
Well, they, Parkway's gonna join.
Not so far away from there.
And that's another way to bypass Gentile.
But I'm just saying that it's main thoroughfares to the same area. I'm not saying that you have to be on Gentile to go there.
Yeah.
They all feed there, so it needs to be commercial.
I could see that argument, because you will have that road hooking up to Bluff.
Mm-hmm.
You'll have Gentile, but you have no freeway off ramp anywhere near there.
Okay, so let me bring this up while we're here.
Is the freeway off ramp?
Okay, so if we just.
Or West Davis.
No, off ramp for the circuit.
If you, you don't, so if we justify commercial here, which I'm not gonna say no to right here, isn't it inevitable that that sprawls down here, so that this becomes also? Because what I'm saying is if we're gonna say that this and this crossing is gonna be affected, shouldn't we take part of that as well?
That's a good thought, because, you know, it really isn't ideal for homes, so.
No, it's not.
No, I would. So I would definitely go with that.
And it's marsh right now, right?
Yeah, it is.
Usually you wanna, like a good planning is to have a four corners kinda intersection. The reason why that.
We don't have that, because this is green space really mitigating.
There's, there's, the Bluff Road has an elevation Bluff, so it goes down and there are wetlands along there.
Yes.
That's why, and.
You step onto the top.
A gas station or any commercial's gonna need a little bit bigger piece of property than that sliver, so that's why, but honestly.
I wouldn't go all the way up here, but I would take somewhere in here, like where the one thousand comes in and make that the same, so that you're not, so whatever they tuck in there, cause there's no way to put a house right there. I wouldn't want it any kind of passing.
Well, it may result in a mixed use development along there that might.
But that gets in red.
Yeah, I think I agree changing that to red. If we're gonna leave that red, then we ought to.
We're gonna leave it, let's make more of it.
Give it something that they can do something with.
Should we, should we have a little bit of orange above that red to the, the east?
Yes.
Yeah, around the park, I, I don't want businesses next to, close to the east.
I'm talking about to the east of the red, above there, do a little bit of orange to, to graduate that.
Well, a lot of this is.
That's already houses, isn't it?
No, there's some fields.
Fields, great big cornfield.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
I guess I'd be open to it if somebody was gonna propose it, but I don't really wanna push it, but yeah.
But, you know, we're planning for the future.
But I see it, it makes sense. I wouldn't be opposed.
Okay.
Can I add something if he's, sorry.
All right, he's gonna take that piece one.
So we, with the roundabout project, we've been working on getting the trail along that, that south edge of Bluff.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, so, I know that Leyton Canal has their pipeline running along there. They actually own a hundred foot amphibian tidal of land.
Wow.
They, and you know, with the, Leyton Canal also crosses that, same thing. They're not gonna let anything be built on it. We're lucky to even have a trail on it, but it's through a license agreement. They're not gonna sell it to anyone else.
So you're saying all sound went out.
Unless someone were to buy their canal.
So you're saying the landing question's not gonna happen anywhere?
Right. You can zone it anything. Nothing will get built between Bluff and West Davis.
It's gonna be a trail. Trail from you.
Except for a trail.
Yeah, zone it as a trail.
Then zone a trail if there's no other option.
We have a, we have a trail zone?
We have, you have park zone.
Yeah, I mean, just take, take that whole area and just turn it green and go all the way up to the park.
Good info.
Yep.
Can you, can you show me where that runs? Cause we oughta just plan on not, what the Leyton Canal?
Yes. But don't touch this.
So the very, the very south end of it, it crosses Gentile and just drains in that ditch right there. But it basically just runs right up along, right up along the edge of Bluff Road, all the way, all the way up.
And that's true, that, that area right there, we already have an issue. Well, they, they have, they can't build there. And we're, we're making them do proper, you know, so maybe we just zone it green all along there and just make it look like it's beautiful.
I wanna make sure I understand what you guys are saying.
Yeah.
So from here down?
Yeah.
I think, I think it makes perfect sense, cause the width of it, but I think.
There is space here, you could do something.
But, but right along Bluff.
Okay, but, so what, that's. Okay, but so what, that space that you say is enough to do something?
What is it? What is it? Where, how do you ask?
Okay, so here's, yeah, so here's that little chunk in there. So UDOT owns that now, correct?
Yeah.
Because they're in preparation.
Yes.
They're gonna look to unload it. We have talked a few times before that if UDOT were to grant it to us, we might make campsite or something out of it.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Or maybe.
We did sell it in the first place to them.
Right, or maybe it's the future dog park. I don't know, but off the back end of Jensen.
That's a good place for. I think it's the future RV park.
Oh.
I would be good with that too. My point is, is that it's really not a good housing development, but I think some kind of extension that go is cohesive with the park.
I like that, but I'm regular camping even because they treat it better.
Cause RV park, you've already got power in the park.
Yeah.
You, you've already got sewer in the park.
And you usually have a camp post that's keeping track of people.
It'll give them someplace to stay while they're going to Anlo.
Yeah, and then they can just go jet over and go down to Anlo Island and.
Sounding like a popular idea, idea to change the orange from green.
Okay, we're good.
I'm not sure if I got clear direction on the orange and red over there.
The next council is scribbling all over this case. Forget it, we're not.
Wait.
Robert?
I like Robert's input.
I was just looking up the internet, it's a little slow right now, but I do know on the transportation master plan, Gentile and Bluff, that intersection, the traffic counts decrease once West Davis goes in place. Because a lot of the traffic council we get now are, are regional, kinda pass through, people from, from Caseville to Hooper and everywhere in between, just kinda, it's pass through traffic right now. People getting around, uh, kinda a west side roadway. Once West Davis goes in, uh, some of the burden of that traffic will go onto West Davis and will just pass through this without, without being on our local streets. It won't eliminate traffic, but the transit, transportation master plan shows it actually going decreasing at that intersection, so.
So I think that the consensus was below Jensen down to Gentile on that west side goes green.
I got that.
Okay.
That little area will have as red, but I don't know if it'll. Hopefully that's enough. I don't think it, we will probably end up changing that.
Yeah, that's what we asked. But I'm okay with that.
Like you said, they'll scribble all over it. What were they thinking?
I don't have many in common. Okay, that's we can somehow get more land from the sewer district. Okay, thanks guys.
So what about the land that's the sewer districts that's up above, about this piece of land, right? Sorry.
Was all that sewer district land?
This is all sewer district, pretty much from here over is all sewer district land. They also own a chunk right here.
I think we should work with them to put a park. That would be the greenest grass in the city.
Well, so unfortunately.
It's like in Farmington where they call it a sod farm, cut off a couple of feet of it every year, sell that and then they grow it back.
Hey, look, I love that, all the ideas, but they have limited even, ability to even use the water. People are fighting and saying you can't have the water that's now purified and discharged and would grow the rest.
Oh, that's a load of garbage.
Friends of the Great Salt Lake saying we're the reason the lakes flow.
It's still gonna go that way, I'm sorry.
How does that work?
Because we don't discharge enough of it.
We would, we would be discharging it, just.
I only.
It's not their fault.
It all flows down.
Water, water comes from all the rest of us.
Just let them know that you only hold on to our water for two hours.
Dave, Dave, were you asking if we should change some of the.
Yeah, I wonder if we should, why we should call it residential when it's impermanent.
Yeah, it's a good question. Maybe by the year twenty fifty, it'll be better technology, I don't know.
This area.
He's saying, uh, this, so the sewer district owns kind of a piece like right there. Why not make that green too?
We could, I don't know what the development potential, if they're not, if they're never gonna sell it.
Right now, they, they're.
What about the, the property to the north though of Anlo? Uh, that's, we had talked about park space before and the trails kind of to the west of the church there. We talked a while back about.
I want an RV park there as well. That'd be great. That's already green.
Yeah.
Yes, they're coming off of Anlo.
Until the water dries.
We don't need to change anything there, right?
Yeah, except for that sewer flow over there, is it okay?
So do you guys want me to change this?
Yeah, change that field.
That's the question.
What about that?
It's just a big pumpkin patch. But let's let it be green as long as that's the property owner's got its site set on.
Doug, are you following the conversation?
Yeah.
They're talking, they're talking, they've crossed Anlo north between four thousand and forty-five hun, forty-five hundred west?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, not all the way to forty-five hundred. There are a few houses there that are early established. Unless we wanna hit those people, but I don't think so.
Okay, other map concerns, council?
I have some language questions.
I'm, I was curious about what this high density right here.
We finished the map, we'll go to language.
Well, once we took it out.
Well, I'm gonna give you fifteen more minutes.
Once we shipped it, yeah.
Which one's start?
I'm okay, once we took out.
High density on one ninety-three. It seems just kind of a island of. What's the motivation behind that? Was that?
So we, this is, that's new to this week and we're kinda trying it on for size because of the comments that we received last meeting from the landowner. And the rationale there would be to provide a tapering between commercial and the residential. But, and, and then also if you look at the table, high density still would allow professional office.
It still does, but, I mean, I think that what we really want there is something red, so.
And commercial was still.
I guess general commercial is.
It's still in there, high density, but.
Okay, then I'll leave it as is.
But then we, we have to deny housing because that would end up being the request.
Commercial allows mixed use.
I know, I know this council's already said no to housing there.
Or, sorry, I mean.
This little brown area right here.
That is something that, you know, for a future meeting, we, we do need to revisit that cause we actually tabled that application.
Well, I'm gonna say for the purpose of the general plan, we might as well make it red because that seems to be the general consensus.
Wait.
Is only the red uses of the brown are.
Yeah, yeah, so if you make it red, you, you could, uh, do some mixed use there if they're saying that it's residential.
We've talked about doing graduated areas in other parts of the city. It does make sense to have that.
Well, you went high density straight into the yellow, low density.
Right, but versus commercial right next door.
Yeah, so.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, it's up to you guys. Let's do his best.
I think it's fine. I'm not, we can have some residences too.
Yeah, the high density could, could yield a, a gradient.
You still will if you want the mixed use.
Right, but I, I think that's.
I don't want single family homes in the middle.
But high density.
High density.
Maybe we could talk about what we, what you would want. So if there's single family, would you want townhomes and then some commercial?
And, and townhomes makes sense there.
I think that's a perfect spot to use mixed use. That would be the perfect spot to try out mixed use.
You could try, I, I agree, but I don't, if it's all townhomes, I think that's a perfect graduation from one to the other. It really is.
So townhomes and then a park, mixed use apartment buildings?
Yeah, I mean, if you have some neighborhood services right there too.
Well, I'm okay with it like that. I, I don't wanna see. Yeah, but we're not giving it a commercial.
What I'm hearing, what I'm hearing from the, from the, from the masses is it's just to leave it there and we'll address that when we see it.
I agree. I, I think that's a good place.
Leave what they're.
Leave it the way it is.
Leave the brown there.
Leave the brown there. Okay, the recommendation was to make it red. What I'm hearing from others is this gives it some more degrees of freedom.
Yes.
I'm hearing two, two split, but.
Do we wanna hear from Doug?
Doug?
Okay, uh, I think some sort of, something that makes a graduated zone in there make sense. I'm not sure it's high density though. I, I don't know that I like that ground there.
Okay.
So what are you thinking there?
He's saying graduating of some sort, how we.
Well, a, a mixed use or a townhome product.
Which is covered by the red.
Yeah.
She wanna turn it red?
But that's commercial according to this map.
But mixed use.
But mixed use is in the res.
Right, but if we're doing PRD, which is townhomes, I think that qualifies.
It's hard to really predict the future there.
I know, but I don't.
So I think that that's a good graduation.
And perhaps I could make a stab of what I would predict. If it's a commercial mixed use, I would probably envision that it would be more apartment building. And if there was the medium, it'd probably be more townhomes. That's my guess, but honestly, both.
Can I turn it medium? Turn it orange?
But then, but then if you turned it orange, you wouldn't have any commercial options.
Because then you don't have any commercial options.
So, I mean, there's, using the mixed use zone, there's potential to have either red or orange and still get the same thing. It's hard, like I said, it's hard to really predict the future. So we're painting with the broad brush. If you look at your pictures here, you know, would you rather have, would you rather have this one or would you rather have this one?
Kind of the same.
Yeah, maybe we don't.
Do you wanna set a variety?
Well, I need a color or something, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Dave says red. Doug, what do you say?
I, I don't wanna just change it to medium. I don't think that's a problem. I would need to change it. I lean toward changing it to, to red, to commercial. I can support leaving it how it is.
No, cause we got two red and two brown. You gotta pick one and the other.
What do you get when you mix red and brown?
Which is next door, I mean, that's true.
If I'm pushed right now, I'm leaning toward just changing it to red.
Okay, all right, so Dave, red, red, okay, Jordan, you fine with?
Red.
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 And I'd say keep it brown. I'd say keep it brown.
Let's go red.
Can the landlord make a comment at all?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
The, the brown provides more flexibility from our perspective. You know our feelings on it. Um, that graduation is what we're after. PRD allows that graduation for us, whereas mixed use, you don't even have a mixed use ordinance. I can't make the application right now. Nor do I even know what it looks like. You guys could, you could vote on something that I have no idea what that looks like. With the brown, I can make application. I know what that looks like. I can provide visual applications to you. You know, you can actually see what I'm bringing to the table and see if you like it. You, you're the land use authority. You can decide whether or not you wanna accept that. But the mixed use, it's just so, so out there, I have no idea what that is. And that's my only option as a landlord for that residential buffer component that I, that we've talked about.
So that being the case, I, I'm willing to go over to brown. However, my preference is still gonna be general commercial there.
And that's great.
And so if you wanted to bring in a PRD, I would look at it, but I'm definitely leaning towards general commercial. Or mixed use, which could also be allowable, whatever that ends up being. We really need to get on that. I know planning commission's talking about it.
Yes.
Yeah.
They're, they're moving it to a public hearing next time.
Okay, that's good. And it's, I'm reading the packets now that I have them, so.
Okay, so are you red, brown?
I'll switch over to brown. I'll, I'll allow them to go over to brown. But, um, I, but I've expressed to the landowner what my preferences are.
Well, if you say that, then you're gonna get a proposal for PRD. That's what the landlord just said. You'll get the PRD proposal. I'm not sure I'm ready to go there. I don't wanna give, I don't wanna give false hope.
How many acres is this? Like five acres?
It's nine. It's nine acres, so that's qualified.
Council, I'm just asking for flexibility. Mixed use does not provide me flexibility. I don't have an application to send you right now. I'm just saying, I need the flexibility to, 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 to be able to propose something to you and we can work together on what that looks like.
But, but to your point, you're, you're, you're putting a lot of effort into trying to figure out how to appease a landowner in a different part of the city. When you have a different landowner making the same request and you're saying, forget about it.
Now, let me tell you why. Because this part here where I'm trying to appease, if you're talking about this orange next to it between two yellows, you've split a zone that's all one thing with a new zone.
Okay.
Where I'm here, what I'm trying to protect is this red right here is really important to be commercial. I'm afraid that if this goes housing, you're gonna have people that are not want, gonna wanna be up against housing and part of your commercial. So I do not wanna destroy this piece of land that I think is essential to the future of our city, is that we get some commercial up on that road. And, but the more we bring houses up against it, the less appealing it is.
But it's also right across the street from a school.
I think it's always.
And that's your, that's your segue into between commercial and low density. Where we've often talked about a buffer zone.
That's right.
And I think that is a buffer zone and we have an enormous amount of commercial and possible industrial along that frontage there. You're not wiping out any frontage. You're just talking about the segue into the low density.
We get that. And the next, the next request is let's take this red and turn it yellow or orange and then just keep going. And the red that we have, I think, needs to be protected. I think the future of our city depends on it.
I think that this nine acres will be just fine. With it being a transitionary and all of that, but hey, you might get some commercial in there that'd be like, hey, I'm really glad that you brought a little bit of high density right next to me. And our definition is townhomes.
This is, this has been helpful, guys. I appreciate it. Good, good debate. I think I'm hearing keep it brown.
Yes.
Despite.
And I'm okay with that too. So the conversation of the last two minutes, uh, the point that was brought to me, to my mind is that, uh, we don't know what mixed use is yet. And when I picture mixed use there, I think it could work, but I don't even know what that, what that's going to be for our city. So I can support staying brown. Hey, mayor?
The only difference between the two is one of them has a PRD and one of them doesn't.
That's real allowing for PRD.
Did you wanna say something, Brody?
Yeah, does it, yeah, mayor, can I say something to that?
Sure, you bet. Well, welcome, welcome, welcome back.
I've been listening all along, very, very silently. So I've, we, we spoke with the, the representatives from Nenugrit earlier, um, and, and one thing that I mentioned to them, um, I'll mention to you, and that is, uh, and I think it kinda goes to, to all the arguments. If, if that piece were to be general planned so that it could be kind of a, kinda on the higher end of residential, um, you can have a form, you can, you can build it so it looks a little more commercial. And what I suggested to them on that, on that corner across the street from Funeral Hall, that you can maybe even add a small kind of office or a, you know, maybe the, the fitness center for, for an apartment or something. If you were to do actual apartments, um, it can look kinda commercial, but it's actually residential. And it kinda, it won't detract from that large piece, um, you know, that, that's owned by PRI. Uh, you, you know, it won't push that into residential, um, because now you've transitioned away from the single family into a, a more intense use. And then that going west would, would actually create momentum to go even more intense to that, that corner with two thousand west.